It is 6:00 PM and we will start our city council work session. We have one agenda item tonight. That is a gateway discussion and review of mixed-use zoning criteria with Laura Smith and Brian Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Justin, if you would, please go ahead and pull up a PowerPoint presentation. There's some copies on the table. If they're all gone, we're making some additional ones. This will be uploaded to the packet first thing in the morning. But we'll kind of walk through this, give Justin a chance to pull that up. And then Brian and I are just going to kind of tag-team various sections of our conversation this evening. Okay, I think we're ready. First slide, please. So I think all of us could agree that from where we started back in 2005, 2006, to where we are today, there's definitely been a long and winding road with respect to redevelopment of the Gateway Site. And so, next slide, please. What do we hope to accomplish this evening? So currently, the site has no zoning entitlements or incentives in place. So for the first time in many, many years, any new project that might come forward is essentially working from somewhat of a blank slate and will have to come back through the Planning Commission and the City Council for development plans as well as any requests to incentives should that be in place. I think everybody's familiar that there's ongoing litigation that the city is not a party to. So we wait for the issues regarding the foreclosure action and the liens to be resolved and then sort of see what next steps might transpire. So we're kind of at this unique point in time where we aren't talking about the specifics of any particular development project. We wanted to take the opportunity because for many of you, you've not had the opportunity to walk through the mixed-use zoning criteria, some of the history and context of the site, and perhaps give you a chance to think a little bit more proactively when a new project does come forward. So we're not reacting without having been through some of this history and context. So again, where have we been for the past 20 years? Understanding the current zoning requirements as it relates to mixed use. There's also an overlay district for this site. And are there things that we want to revisit? You'll all remember that we will be kicking off next month our zoning code update. And so there may be things that we want to think about this site and these zoning criteria are something that would normally be a part of the conversations that we engage in with the consultant. And then we wanted to just talk a little bit about other mixed-use projects, local and elsewhere, really more of just an opportunity for you to react to some visuals and think about. We're not suggesting that some are not really assigning good or bad to them, just kind of giving you an opportunity to react. What do we like? What do we don't like? Again, as we think in this larger context about the future. And we anticipate this to really just be the first of many conversations that we hope to have about redevelopment of the site. So next slide, please. So what aren't we going to do tonight? We aren't going to rehash the details from every project plan that has come forward over the last 20 years, or I would have had to buy breakfast for you all in the morning, probably. We aren't going, we aren't here tonight to discuss support for future incentives. That's a premature conversation until we have an actual request that comes forward. And we don't expect that we're going to reach any consensus on what we would like to see developed there. But we can start that conversation. And we aren't going to walk away this evening with dramatic improvements to the condition of the site. And we'll address kind of what we're doing from a code enforcement perspective as we get through the presentation. So I'm going to start with just kind of a history. You have a longer history of the site, going all the way back to its initial construction in 1956. And kudos to Brian who started this. And I had the easy job of just filling in some of the dates and time periods. But it's really interesting and was good information for me to go back and look at and just think about all of the things and conversations and decisions that have been made, particularly relative to the zoning entitlements and the development plans for the site. So there are copies available in the back. This will also be uploaded to our website along with the PowerPoint presentation first thing in the morning. So I'm not going to go through all 10 pages of that site history, but next slide, please. So as I mentioned, the shopping center initially opened in 1956. It was one of the first suburban shopping centers in the region. And it was designed as an open-air mall with a Macy's department store serving as the anchor. Woolworths in the middle, you hear a lot of stories about people who've been here for quite some time. So some photos there of what the shopping center initially looked like. Next slide, please. And in 1989, the original shopping center was demolished and rebuilt as an enclosed mall. And the new enclosed mall was anchored on either end by a Dillard's. And so Dillard's South was women's apparel, Dillard's North men's and children's apparel. And then shops in the middle, there was a fountain, there was a staircase. They had 50 leasable storefronts and about 350,000 square feet of retail space. And they maintained about a 65% to 75% occupancy rate throughout the life of that. The site of both the original shopping center and the subsequent enclosed mall was in a low spot along the Rock Creek Channel. And so that flowed underneath and through the site, really at a diagonal from Rowan Drive to Row. And the site would often experience flooding. I've heard stories and seen pictures of cars that were floating in the parking garage when it was the Mission Center Mall. And then, not specific to this project necessarily, but in 2003, largely in response to all of the flooding that occurred in the metro in 1998, FEMA revised all of their floodplain maps and they put about $35 million worth of property within Mission in a 100-year floodplain that had not been in a 100-year floodplain before. And that included this particular site. City Council, Mayor, City Administrator at that time then began all sorts of efforts to look at and think about what do we do? How do we begin to address this and not only maintain, but think about enhancing the underlying valuation of our property? And particularly, as we all know, the Rock Creek Channel follows along behind a lot of the downtown district. So for many of our commercial properties. And so the council adopted a charter ordinance which established a stormwater utility, which allowed the city to begin to think about one mechanism to fund stormwater improvements. About that same time, I think if, I've heard lots of stories in my nearly 20 years here about we kept Walmart out of Mission. In 2004, Kopeck and White and Blitt, who owned the Mission Center Mall, announced that they were planning to sell the Walmart, or to sell the site to Walmart for a new 203,000-square-foot supercenter. And due to a really strong community reaction to this, so no plans were ever formally submitted. The City Council adopted amendment to the zoning code in August of that year, limiting the footprint of any super-discount or discount store to 50,000 square feet. So that didn't prohibit construction of discount or super-discount stores. It meant you had to build up instead of out if you wanted to come to Mission. Ultimately, Walmart decided to stay in their Rowan Park location. In August, about a year later, in August, the Cameron Group out of East Syracuse, New York, purchased the property with the intent of building a mixed-use development on the site. At that time, from what I understand and recall, the mall, I believe, was headed or was in receivership. And the ends were owned separately from the middle of the mall. So at the time that it was purchased by the Cameron Group LLC, it would have been sold to someone. So in reaction then to the updated floodplain maps and trying to think about how to resolve those issues, the city was actively pursuing stormwater improvements up and down the channel, going to Washington DC, securing federal dollars, state dollars, county dollars to really begin to help remediate and bring properties out of the floodplain. We looked at financing mechanisms, which included the creation of the stormwater utilities, I mentioned, and then creation in 2006 and 2007 of drainage districts, one that encompasses just this particular site and one that runs then from Rowan Drive through Lamar that follows essentially the Rock Creek Channel. So in February of 2006, the mall was permanently closed and with plans to demolish the structure and replace it with a mixed-use development called the Gateway. This is the plan from 2006. The proposed development included approximately 1.4 million square feet and included a 16-story building that housed 350 condominium units and 150-room hotel, 500,000 square feet of retail, 200,000 square feet of office space, and in a 10-story building in a Johnson Drive Community College Extension campus. Then the estimated development cost at that time was about $380 million. Interestingly enough, as this plan went through, we didn't have the anticipated objection to the height of either of the buildings. And so here you can kind of see a little bit different layout than what we've seen. You can see much more sort of interior circulation within the site, some more sort of civic plazas, gathering areas within that. The corner at Shawnee Mission Parkway and Rowan Drive was structured parking. The top, so what you see is the top level of, I believe, a three-story parking structure. So at that point, the project used the change in grade from Shawnee Mission Parkway as it moves to the north. And so there was a significant amount of underground parking as well. Council approved the rezoning of the site in 2006 to Plan Mixed Use, MXD, and a preliminary development plan was approved. Because the shopping center was located in the 100-year floodplain, it had, the stormwater improvements had to be made. And that site had to be brought out of the 100-year floodplain before the city could issue a building permit for that project. One of the questions I've often heard over time is, why would we have spent all of that money to make the stormwater improvements and nothing has happened? And at that point, we couldn't allow anything to proceed without making those improvements. So once the mall had been demolished and the site was cleared, we began the installation of three large reinforced concrete boxes or RCBs that run diagonally through the site, as well as a stormwater structure on the northern half that collects water from Cooper Creek and Rowan Park and channels it down and connects it with the Rock Creek Channel. Eventually, a lot of the world of FEMA map revisions moved slowly. But eventually, we submitted all of those improvements to FEMA and they issued a letter of map revision showing that the site was out of the 100-year floodplain. Let's go to the next slide, please. At the time, we were looking at building or starting construction of that. In February of 2007, the City Council passed a resolution related to the stormwater improvements that created a special benefit district that allowed us the ability to recover the costs through an improvement district. That had to be done at the time the project, at the outset of the project, we couldn't go back and impose a special benefit district. We did not activate that special benefit district at that time because there were plans through some of the other financing mechanisms and redevelopment agreements to repay stormwater costs. So things proceeded 2007, 2008. I think there was a situation shortly after the original plan was approved that related to some challenges in financing condominiums as opposed to other types of residential units. And so that was one thing that I know at that point in time started to cause the developer to look at some changes in the project. So it went through several iterations and changes, coming back and forth between the Planning Commission and the City Council in 2007 and 2008. And the overall project square footage was decreasing, but the project was still holding on to many of the similar components, a hotel, office space, some form of residential, retail, and structured parking. The revised plans were scaled back from the 1.4 million in the original plan to about 895,000 square feet. And then as the developer began to look at that, we moved into an iteration that included an aquarium. The aquarium made the project eligible for sales tax revenue bonds, or STAR, bonds, through the state of Kansas. So in June of 2008, and so the project that you see in the upper left-hand corner here is a massing drawing, so it's not a lot of detail, were the project that was approved in connection with the STAR bonds in 2008. So made application to the state, secured $63 million worth of STAR bonds for the project, which included about 415,000 square feet. So you can see in the massing drawing shows a pretty significant scaling back of retail, restaurant, entertainment space, 100,000 feet of office, 150-room hotel. And the project's estimated value was still a little over $300 million. Less than three months after the approval of the STAR bonds, the crash of '08 occurred and really marked the peak of the subprime mortgage crisis and sent an already recessionary economy kind of into a tailspin. And despite the commitment of state sales tax dollars, there was not a clear path forward to actually finance that project. So then we sort of rode out the recession. The developer came back 2011, 2012 with a revised development plan in early 2012 that still included the aquarium, retail, office, residential units, and a hotel. Later in 2012, the developer announced he was no longer going to be including the aquarium and the hotel in the project. And a new proposal was presented, which had 330 apartment units, a fitness center, 400,000 square feet of retail, which included 155,000-square-foot Walmart store. And so that's what you see. The second picture here is that 2012 site plan that was submitted with those components. Council approved, Planning Commission and Council approved that site plan in October 2012. And we did not see construction progress that moved forward. In 2014, the developer came back. He had not been able to secure the sort of pre-leasing required to obtain the private financing. And later that year, I think was the first time we began to see architects and engineers filing suits for non-payment. In the end of December, beginning of January 2014 and 15, the city, recognizing that we, this project maybe was not going to move forward, we activated the special benefit district that had been established several years prior. And this placed a nearly $12 million special assessment on the property that was certified to the county for a 20-year period paid on the tax bill and resulted in about a $600,000-a-year special assessment in addition to general property taxes, our stormwater utility, et cetera. And monies collected from that special assessment were to be deposited into the city's stormwater utility fund. 2015, Tom Valenti, who was the primary developer on this, sold the property to Ari Realty, a real estate entity that was controlled by GFI Development. You've heard probably the name Alan Gross, connected with GFI. But Alan Gross was a part of the Cameron Group LLC and part of this project all along. So this was not really necessarily an introduction of new players. And the Cameron Group remained the developer of record, but was now working in partnership with GFI. In 2015, they brought forward a new plan that had three connected office buildings at the corner of Johnson Drive and Rowan Drive, kind of that third iteration that you see there, three-story office building, a retail building that included the Walmart store and one or two junior anchors, all on one level. Development costs were now estimated to be about $153 million. The City Council, when that plan came forward in November of 2015, remanded it back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration. Came back to the council in January. It was narrowly approved by the City Council. So the developer then thinking the city would be more comfortable approving a plan with something on top of Walmart, included a rooftop park. That plan was narrowly approved by the council. Mayor cast the tie-breaking vote on that plan.
Not me, Mayor.
Not you, Mayor. You weren't Mayor in 2016. The developer still needed support, though, for the incentive package to help offset the cost, revised the plan again, showing additional apartments on the roof of the Walmart or retail building. And that plan was denied by the council in 2016. And shortly after that vote, Walmart announced that they would no longer pursue a location at that site and would remain at their location in Rowan Park. It was about that time, I think, actually, 2015, 2016, that the developer then came back with a revised plan, which introduced the Synergy Entertainment Complex in the site of the former, where the Walmart was intended to be. Variety of things happened. We talked a lot about phasing of projects, et cetera. And so the developer indicated that they would start construction of the project, phase one of the project that time, without incentives. So because there were no incentives required and because they had an approved preliminary development plan at that time, the city issued building permits for construction of the apartment buildings in 2018. And work proceeded through the rest of the summer and fall. In January of 2019, construction on the apartment buildings had paused, reportedly due to the fact that the contractor hadn't been paid for the work that had been done. In March of 2019, the developer submitted a revised plan, increasing the overall square footage slightly by about 35,000 square feet. The most notable changes included the addition of the synergy, the addition of a 40,000-square-foot food hall to be curated by Tom Colicchio and an increase, a slight increase in the office square footage. Again, plan was approved. No incentives were requested for the phase-one construction. So in the summer of 2019, the city issued a building permit for construction of the Synergy building as well as the parking structure. So through the fall of 19, work continued on the physical development as well as work toward the issuance of special obligation bonds for the financing of phase-two of the project. We had approved an incentive deal that anticipated that. We were right up at Thanksgiving time, thought we could market those bonds before the end of 2019. We'd been through the underwriting process. And then ultimately, sort of the holidays and year-end, we hit the pause button because it's not the greatest time to go to the bond market. Then in early 2020, construction once again came to halt. Some initial sort of reasoning and suggestions were that was related to COVID. And I think there were some implications there, particularly as it related to financing of a large entertainment facility and/or office buildings and not knowing what might happen post-pandemic. And later that summer, the summer of 2020, several other contractors and their subs working on the project began filing mechanic's liens on the property. In June of '22, the developer came back with yet another revised plan, which the council approved in September. And that's what you see kind of in the bottom left-hand corner. Retail was down to about 140,000 square feet, 202-room hotel, 373 apartments, parking garage, and all the associated infrastructure. So the revised plan was approved in September of '22, redevelopment agreement in January of '23. And then in April, kind of April-May timeframe in 2023, as the developer was working to secure their private financing, we became aware that the Metropolitan Commercial Bank of New York had foreclosed on the developer's initial loan of approximately $24 million. While that was not an event of default in and of itself, when the developer failed to make a tax payment in May of that year, the city sent the required notice of event of default, which began a 60-day cure period, giving them the opportunity to remedy that default. When that 60-day period passed and the taxes had not been paid, the city formally declared the developer in default of the redevelopment agreement, rescinded the redevelopment agreement, also terminated the tax increment financing project plan and the community improvement district, essentially leaving that site with no incentives approved or in place. And we had also tied the preliminary development plan to the construction timelines included in the redevelopment agreement. And so when that did not proceed on schedule, the preliminary development plan became null and void. Hence where I started tonight with there are no zoning entitlements and no incentives in place. We haven't seen construction activity on the site since the spring of 2003. We've sent property maintenance notices. We've abated, generally mowing the perimeter of the site periodically, assessing the cost back to the developer and then certifying them to the tax bill if they're not paid. In September of last year, the Metropolitan Commercial Bank actually brought the taxes on the site current. The first half, where we stand today, first half of the tax payment on the property was not paid by the December 10, 2024 deadline. So that's kind of where we stand today in terms of just a very quick run-through of development. So next slide, please. So really, this history that we prepared focused a lot on the physical components of the site and how that has changed. What about the incentives? Well, if we thought the changes in the actual physical components of the project plan were complicated, trying to walk you through all of the iterations and variations of incentives that were approved would take us even longer. Every year that the project has been in front of the City Council, it has included some form of a public-private partnership. But it has varied widely over the course of the last 20 years in terms of how that was comprised. There were points in time in which 100% of the revenues were going to the developer and the city was going to shoulder, outside of tax increment financing, all of the public improvement costs to the tune of 15 or 18 million. There have been points in time when the city agreed to issuing general obligation bonds, which would have been our responsibility had there been a default on this. We have also looked at special obligation bonds, which are, the risk is 100% there on the developer. We've looked at pay-as-you-go scenarios. And we've used various tools, including tax increment financing, a TDD or Transportation Development District, which is not widely used any longer. It was replaced by community improvement districts or CIDs because there was a lot more flexibility in the allowable expenses to be reimbursed. We've looked at sharing of transient guest tax revenues. And so with each iteration of the project, as the project was scaled down and the project continued to not move forward with construction, the city had scraped more and more back to our side of the table in terms of the revenue sharing in that. I think we've said it before, it's included in the frequently asked questions, but we've never paid any incentives over the course of the last 20 years to the developer. And although there have been a lot of frustrations, we, I think every city council has had, first and foremost, the goal and intention of protecting the city and the taxpayers through every redevelopment agreement from a financial standpoint, whether that was moving away from the issuance of general obligation bonds, whether that was activation of a special benefit district, or a variety of other mechanisms. So, next slide, please. So here, that's where we are today. Knowledge of history frees us to be contemporary, gives us a chance to be a little bit more proactive in decision-making as we can be keenly aware of the consequences of choices and decisions that we've made in the past. But knowing the context of the situation can help us really better understand it and to understand that we are not entirely immune to similar challenges as we move forward into the future. So that kind of is a quick history of the recap. I'm going to invite Brian Scott, Deputy City Administrator for Development Services, up to kind of talk through our mixed-use zoning code and what that allows and/or prohibits.
Okay, thanks, Laura. The cold weather has been wreaking havoc on my sinuses. I have a deep voice, but tonight I'm going to sound like I'm talking from the basement, so I apologize. The term mixed use is kind of a state of art in planning and development. It can mean different. It can mean different things to different folks. So I thought I'd kind of start with that first. Generally, definition of mixed use development are places of land uses, residential or commercial, in close proximity to one another with strong overall pedestrian orientation. That kind of makes sense. There's different types of mixed use development. There's more than the neighborhood center, kind of that smaller development within maybe a downtown area or a neighborhood that might have a residential component with your office or retail. Kind of think about some of the developments we've proved recently, like the lanes or more even more recently Mission Beverly, where there's a small retail component in the ground floor along with the residential component on the floors above. Then there's the commercial center, which is more of that mix of retail, office, service, civic space, as well as residential uses. And those are in larger parcels, 10 to 30 acres. And that would be the gateway would be a good example of that. Intensity of uses, obviously residential use is well integrated to any of these other uses, and it can be a variety of apartments or townhomes or even condominiums or even single family homes in some cases. But it's really the density of that residential component that drives a successful mixed use project. And kind of appropriate ratio of those uses with other retail or office. But again, densities really what drive, the residential densities are what really drives the success of that commercial development. Design standards, mixed use is pedestrian oriented. Can't emphasize that enough. And it also establishes a strong public realm. And what we mean by that public realm is that interaction that pedestrians or participants of that use have with the use itself. So it's not necessarily the space around the site, but everything's going on within that site that includes activities for the pedestrians. So creating that strong sense of connection with pedestrian activity and the use itself. And so some examples of this would be the facade of the building should be a fronting or budding the side street as well as a front street. And it should be almost a zero property lot line or no more than 10 feet back from that zero property lot line. So again, those that are walking on the sidewalk are interacting with the building and the storefronts and the activities that are occurring with them. A minimum of 60 to 75% of the facade facing the street should have clear windows. So again, one can see what's going on inside the building, you know, window shopping, if you will. Buildings must have a primary entrance door facing the public sidewalk. So again, you're not going behind the building to get into that particular storefront or restaurant, but you're walking indirectly from the sidewalk. And so you can see as you drive down the street or as you walk down the street, there's a use I'd like to go to. So. Open spaces. This is probably the biggest component of any successful mixed use. And really, these open spaces should be areas that serve as a community gathering place. And are accessible for all, not just those that are using a particular use like a restaurant or maybe a particular activity like an ice skating rink, but really available for anybody to use and enjoy. Those open spaces, those open spaces really create a sense of place. So it's an opportunity for one to go and linger and to be able to enjoy themselves. And it's something that's unique and different from what you might find at a typical shopping center or mall or something like that. And again, that public realm component of the open space. Parking, this is kind of interesting. Parking lots should have pedestrian walkways every 400 feet. And those walkways should have a minimum unobstructed width of six feet and designed to create a safe uninterrupted path that avoids frequent crossings by driveways. Walkway should be separated from parking areas by curb grass, landscaping or other means to create a separate physical separation. And so the best example I can think of that, if you're familiar with the development, that would be at the southeast corner of 119th and Knoll, where there's the Crate and Barrel and the Apple Store and Sullivan's Steakhouse. That's a great example of kind of that pedestrian walkway through the parking area. And you can actually walk from Crate and Barrel over to the Apple Store on the other side of the shopping center and literally follow a pathway through the parking lot to that other use. And it's tree lined, and I think there's maybe a bench or two along the way that you can sit and rest. So it kind of divides and separates you a little bit from the traffic. And it also slows down the circulation of traffic through the development. So you're much more keenly aware, you see that walkway, there's somebody maybe using it. So you're much more observant as a driver of what's going on there. Parking structures should be incorporated to the overall development site so that you're behind the building and not along the street frontage. And in those cases where they are along the street frontage, and sometimes that occurs, that's a great opportunity to have some use on the lower floor of the garage. So there's no reason why you have to park in the first floor. You can have retail use in the first floor. And some creative examples of that have been done in different development projects around the country. So retail on the ground floor, parking in the floors above. So those are just some examples, elements that I have found in mixed use, you know, through reading books and kind of perusing model zoning codes regarding mixed use. So for our particular property that we're speaking of tonight, the Gateway Site is zoned mixed use. That is the only parcel in the city of Mission that has mixed use zoning. And I think that was adopted, I think, 2006. So right around the time that the mall was demolished and plans were being made for new development there. And when I read through that zoning code, the mixed use zoning, it actually brings out a lot of these elements that I just mentioned. So I'll just kind of go through, here's the intent, the kind of the first section of the zoning code, and this language is just lifted directly from the code. Encourage a variety of land uses in close proximity to one another. Encourage of building configurations that create a distinctive and memorable sense of place. Have a mixture of residential, office, retail uses along with public spaces, entertainment uses and other specialty facilities compatible in both character and function. Use of shared parking, use shared parking facilities linked to multiple buildings and uses by an attractive and logical pedestrian network. So again, that kind of goes back to that pathway that I was talking about. Including, include buildings that are primarily multi-story structures with different uses organized vertically rather than horizontally. And that's one of the components that we'll see a little bit later on in our presentation about mixed use. You can have vertical mixed use or you can have horizontal mixed use. So you can have a parcel of property with an apartment building and a restaurant and a little shopping kind of spread around. Where it can all be kind of vertical component, vertical than one or two buildings. Next slide, please. These are all the permitted uses that are allowed in our mixed use zoning. And these are pretty pretty aligned with what I've seen in other model codes, believe it or not. So obviously multifamily dwellings, condominiums, townhomes, apartments, transit type services, transportation terminals, auditoriums, conference facilities, hotels, even sports recreational facilities. So assisted living and senior housing seems a little bit odd, but that that's not out of place, really. I've seen it in other model ordinances. Next slide, please. So for our zoning, there's no height limit. So the sky's the limit. At least 50% of the total floor area shall be located above the ground floor. So that's an FAR floor area ratio of two or greater. So basically, again, it's driving to that kind of vertical design. So we wanted to go up and make it more dense. Setbacks, minimum setback from right away is a zero build line. A minimum of 30% of the development site perimeter, public street frontage shall be occupied by building wall. So again, it goes back to that, what I was talking about earlier with having the the face of the building, a budding the street or the sidewalk facing out, creating that public realm. Don't turn everything inward or put everything in the middle with parking surrounding it, but put it out to the perimeter. Please. Mixed parking regulations. So we have kind of an interesting array of parking requirements and the mixed use of zoning. And most of our pretty low. So residential use is 1.5 spaces per dwelling unit. Typically, we count by bedrooms. So you know, with the studio or one bedroom apartments, one parking space. If it's a two bedrooms, two parking spaces. If it's three, it's two. And that's kind of the average is two. But with this, we lowered it to 1.5. And then we have a minimum parking for non-residential use shall be provided three spaces per 1,000. So that's again, pretty low. It's typically about 4,000 for office or retail. This fourth bullet, maximum grade level parking allowed per use or per project shall be 150% of the minimum parking required for such use. So we're establishing a minimum, and again, I said it's pretty low. The developer most likely is going to want more. You know, my tenant has to have Y. Fine, but then you're kind of capped at 150%, you know. So if you go above the minimum by more than 150%, you need to start thinking about structured parking. And then this last sentence I highlighted here, any new parking facility with a capacity over 200 spaces shall accommodate no more than 60% of the total parking at grade. So again, that's the requirement for structured parking. Now there's zoning considerations. So there is a chapter in our zoning code that speaks to the various districts and starts with Article One, which is residential, and it goes R1 through R6. And then Article Two, which is commercial, and it speaks to office and there's a 2A and 2B retail, and it gets a little fuzzy after that. Then there's other articles for MS1, MS2, the manufacturing and modular homes and some things. Then down towards the bottom of that list, it's just kind of a catchall. And it's West Gateway, Downtown, East Gateway districts. So we have these overlay districts. And we have an overlay district for the east side of town. And it's essentially from Knoll to Row, and it covers all the commercial areas in that area, so between Down Johnson Drive, Down Martway, including the Gateway Site. Then we have the downtown overlay district, which is essentially everything in our traditional downtown district between Knoll and Lamar. Then we have the West Gateway Overlay District, which is everything from Lamar West to Metcalf. And that's the foreign base code, which we'll not speak about tonight. And in this zoning provision that speaks to those overlay districts, this says there shall be overlay districts, and one needs to review these overlay districts when there's any application for new development. And there's some provisions in there like no automotive related uses along Johnson Drive. And that was the catch that we got with the BP station last year when they closed and then they re, wanted to reopen as a gas station. We said, no, you know, you've lost your non-conforming right under that provision. And you now fall under this new, or not new, it's fairly old now, but this, this particular zoning code regulation. So there's some other provisions in there and towards the bottom, and I often overlook this. I'm guilty of this. When I'm flipping through the zoning code, working with an applicant and kind of rushing through it, I'll overlook this provision, but there's a section about discount stores. And that's what Laura was speaking to when the mall was first proposed to be sold and Walmart was going to be the new tenant or the purchaser of the site for a new store. And there was a strong opposition to this idea of a big discount store in our community. The city council adopted these provisions on our zoning code. And that's this section right here. And it's kind of interesting to read through this. The building footprint shall not exceed 50% of the gross square footage of the building or 50,000 square feet, whichever is less. No more than 25% of the parking requirement shall be satisfied with surface parking. So again, we're kind of driving to you have to have structured parking if you're going to have a discount store, a super discount store. Surface parking lots are prohibited between the building facade and a public street or at the intersection of two public streets and shall be located to the side or the rear of the building. So if you're going to have any kind of surface parking or structured parking, it's got to be behind the building, not in front, like we traditionally see with Walmart targeting those kind of supersized stores. This is our third bullet point. This is one of the quirks about the zoning code I do not like. This is why we're updating our zoning code. I discovered this a few weeks ago when I was preparing this. I never saw this before. A total of no less than 20% of the site shall be openly landscaped. So that goes back directly to that open space I was talking about with mixed use development. This space shall be, for the most part, one or more exterior plazas, pocket parks or other areas of similar nature, which encourage pedestrian activity and provide a place for public events, gathering of the community. Great provision. How that relates to discount stores, I have no idea. And I can only use it for discount stores. So when Walmart does come, we can apply this to that discount store application, but I can't use it anywhere else for any other type of development because it's tucked away in this little particular section of the code. So that's the things that frustrate me about the zoning code. Yeah, next slide, please. I'll take this and I'll stop and hand it back to Laura. So I was speaking earlier about the overlay districts, and this particular site is in the East Gateway Redevelopment Overlay District. And there was a plan that was developed. It was developed in conjunction with not only Mission, but Fairway and Roland Park. So all three of those cities kind of meet at the corner of Row and Johnson Drive and kind of has some common interests. So the three cities kind of worked together to develop this plan. It was adopted in 2006. And they said it encompasses everything from Knoll to Row. The plan really calls for supporting higher density through more urban housing options in the area. It calls out some possible road realignments to allow for more grid-like street pattern that would provide greater connectivity, slow traffic and support more pedestrian oriented development. And I think one example is the plan specifically calls out taking Martway through the Gateway Site and kind of curving it around and having it intersect with Johnson Drive. About where that intersection is now, we've seen the other plans in Gateway Site. So it's kind of bringing the street through the Gateway Site. And that sort of breaks up the site, creates opportunities for more retail, not only on Johnson Drive and Roland Drive, Row, but through the site as well, in the middle of the site. Then also enhancements again to the public realm, including a promenade between Martway and Johnson Drive and greater landscaping through the area. I can only think that promenade would probably be right through the Mission Shopping Center, Mission Mart Shopping Center. So kind of that open area where they have the archways, that was actually a street at one time. Back in the day, that was a street. It was vacated to the owners of the shopping center, but by recreating that street as kind of a promenade, I think was what was the vision of that plan. So. We, when we meet with applicants, we we give them a copy of our zoning code, we give them a copy of the master plan for a particular area that's applicable, we give them a copy of our Johnson Drive design guidelines. And even though it says Johnson Drive, it's really applicable to any commercial development in the town. And it calls it out for materials and landscaping and how window treatment should be done and awnings and signage and kind of those touchy feely soft points within a development project. So we always send applicants out a little care package from us. And these are some of the things that are included in that care package. So. Take it back.
All right. So like I said, a very long and winding road, but kind of a, I think, an important refresher or look at what has guided decisions and is still in place to do that. I think Brian sort of touched on this, but I think everybody's aware that we really have in Mission, three very distinct districts. We have our East Gateway District. We have our traditional downtown from Noll to Lamar. That so many cities are trying to replicate and recreate. And then we have our West Gateway District where the uses are much more auto centric parking lots in front. Those kinds of things, so. Previous city administrator used to describe it almost as a barbell where we were looking at trying to increase density on the east and west ends. Connected by that more traditional downtown. So what we want to do now is sort of transition into some examples of mixed use development. Some are ones that Brian and I have generated, others are ones that you all have shared with me over time. But I want to start with sort of what do I hear often from you all that you want? And I think this translates to the public as well, but aligning with much of what Brian shared, more green space. More civic or public space gathering, community gathering space within a project. Residential component, restaurants, some sort of entertainment or destination and local retail. And I think that is, and as we look at some of the renderings and examples and we talk through. I think it goes back to some of the things that Brian was describing in terms of the zero setbacks and the density of the buildings and that interaction with the public realm. We want to bring people in perhaps to eat, to come to an entertainment venue, but give them a reason to stay. And walk along the sidewalks and shop and not just get in their car, drive and then go home and not interact. So both for visitors to the site and for residents that live within a particular mixed use development or in surrounding neighborhoods. So we'll talk through some of those kinds of things and again, as we go through some of these pictures, I would just ask that you all. Sort of react maybe to them as you see them about things that you like or don't like. Again, nothing is set in stone, it just helps us visualize a little bit. And the thing, the places where I hear you sort of differ, and I think that will come out maybe in this next phase of the conversation. I hear some differences in terms of preferences for density, maybe preferences for height. But those are really probably the two areas where I see the greatest amount of difference. So let's just kind of start at the next slide, please. And these are some projects. The first few that we'll look at are either under development, have been developed. In the Kansas City Metro. And so you can go touch and feel them if you'd like. The first is the Promontory at Ninetieth and Metcalf. What I would say is most of the ones, these initial ones that we're going to look at here in the KC Metro. Align more closely with what Brian was describing as the horizontal mixed use instead of the vertical mixed use. So there may be some structured parking elements particularly associated with the residential components. But most of the rest of this are out parcels and surface parking. And we didn't, we didn't go through, you know, as we continue in our conversations, we can look at mix of tenants and those sorts of things. And then the Galleria at one hundred and fifteenth and Noll again is sort of a similar project in terms of layout and design. But you'll see a variety of building heights in both of those. The next slide, please, is probably one of the closest developments that we have to sort of what has been envisioned for our site. And that is Park Place Development in Lee Wood. Which is adjacent to Town Center Plaza, which is more of that traditional retail. Shopping center, but this is again, you see circulation throughout the site, you see integrated parking. You see that community green, I don't know if they still use it, I haven't been there for a while, for an ice skating rink in the winter time, but. So a lot of that activation, I think it has not always been easy as I've understood it to keep spaces leased and tenants in those spaces. But this is probably the closest example. Zona Rosa, which is a development that is north of the river, was being developed. And planned about the same time that we were having initial conversations around the gateway. There were some at times similar tenants, overlapping tenants. I think there are a lot of challenges with that site. It's not walkable from other neighborhoods in that location at all. I think that's one of, and we'll touch on sort of pros and cons of what we see in our gateway site. But I think that it has struggled. The residential component is very small. There's still, I think, some level of retail, but I don't think it has aligned with the initial vision. I didn't include a photograph of that. Next slide, please. We have Merriam Grand Station, which is Merriam's new project at Antioch and shiny Mission Parkway. Again, I think a quality development, but more that horizontal mixed use component. Someone had suggested the Berkeley Riverfront Development in KC Mo. That is under development, it's not all there yet. But residential, they have. The current stadium, obviously, a variety of other entertainment restaurant uses along there. I think that gets more to that sense of density that I think some have expressed an interest in. And then again, the seventy fifth and Wornell Mixed Use Project here in KC Mo and the Waldo area. It's a little bit more dense and not more vertical uses. Anything in any of the local developments, thoughts, reactions, likes, dislikes? Mayor, you want to, or sorry, Leah?
I think it's interesting that you brought up that Zona Rosa was being conceptualized and built around the same time. And I was there shortly after it was open, but you're right, it's cool when you're there. But it's just a thing that's, there's not a lot of things around it. So it's not like a neighborhood is outside of that, people coming and going, it's a destination, which is walkable. But it's not integrated into the community. And I think it's interesting to hear you say that it's it's sometimes struggles to stay.
Well, I think the, I happen to live north of the river, so occasionally in there, but I think the last time I was there. There's some structured parking that is cordoned off, it's I think having some structural issues. Again, the residential component is is not significant, there tend to be a lot of vacancies in the storefronts. And some of the larger retailers have, the Dillards, for example, has a combination of surface and a small structured parking. Some of the others have just larger surface parking lots that are outside the core of that development, but you park and then sort of walk in. There's very limited parking inside the site.
I had a comment and I'll go to, go to Ben.
Joseph had her hat.
Oh, sorry, Joseph.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think we hear from developers that they tend to think that Galleria and Promontory. Are mixed use and I don't think those are really consistent with what we've talked about in terms of mixed use. You know, sort of those seas of surface parking and it's not really, nothing about those sites says come in and walk here to me or come here and stay. You know, and gather to me, I think I would agree with your assessment that the closest, at least. Already constructed example that I'm aware of in the metro is Park Place. You know, I don't know that it's perfect, but I think it's a lot closer to what, to what we've talked about in other conversations. And that I would view as really mixed use. And I think also looking at the plans for Berkeley, obviously absent the stadium, given, given the size of our site. I know there are some good jokes going around about that, but you know, having those higher buildings, having, I know there's been a lot of talk about other gathering. Community gathering spaces in connection with that site. And I think that the only way we're going to get the green space that I know a lot of us have talked about. And that people were kind of sad about in the latest iteration of the gateway plan is to go more vertical. I think the site is small enough that if you're looking, you know, to really have this. Have a financing plan that would make sense, you're going to have to go more vertical than probably even the last. Plan that came through in order to get that green space and community gathering space that we've said we want. But yeah, Ben?
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with I think both of those comments. I think Park Place is a good example. It's got a lot going on sort of inside its borders, but it's strangled by really high speed arterial roads. You're not going to walk there, I mean, maybe, maybe if you live across one of those streets where there's some some townhomes and things. But you're not going to walk there and then, yeah, I mean, Promontory, several of the other developments where you see a lot of outlots and a lot of surface parking. I think mixed use lives and dies by how many people are going to circulate within it at all hours of the day. And how many people are going to be able to get there from nearby neighborhoods? So I think for our part as a city, you know, building on top of that need for some vertical density. If you want a district like this to succeed, what I really think we need to see is is being able to to get there on foot from, you know. From the lanes projects and whatever's coming next on there from the Mission Mark, from the neighborhoods in Roland Park. And even from across Shiny Mission Parkway, which is going to require some careful thought. But I mean, that's sort of the the major frontage of this parcel is a highway and you need to, you need to get people walking over and making short trips from, from that direction. I think to really fully activate the site, so. I think the allowances that we have for surface parking are far too generous in our current zoning. But I really think a lot of the rest of the provisions are pretty thoughtful, especially for for how long they've been on the books. But yeah, I mean, just sort of reacting directly to these developments you've put up so far. I think Park Place is a good starting point. I think if you really want to to pick an example where. A lack of connectivity really hurts it, the Zona Rosa one is great because it's, it is choked by, by car traffic and in all directions. There's, there's no side that isn't at least four lanes and pretty high speed. So if we, you know, for our part, we're able to to narrow and slow a lot of the the street frontage and add parallel parking. To an appropriate development, I'm not saying to do that, you know, no matter what happens on the site. I think that would be a reasonable thing for the city to do as part of a partnership.
Yeah, Cheryl? One of the things I think about, you know, gateway, just the word gateway and thinking about that intersection of Fairway and and Roland Park. It's like something's got to pop there, you know, something that, you know, you have the vertical, but you also have this open space. And I'm looking at this Atlanta thing, you know, big screen type thing where it's a destination. It's a funnel down Martway, because if we think about the, the density that we have on Martway and we're going to have on Martway with apartments. You gotta get someplace and you gotta create some, some, you know, some fun and entertainment. I think about, you know, what we've done with the Mission Market and how that has been, I see the people literally walking down Martway and Johnson Drive and everything. I can envision something like that, but it's got to be almost something that comes up from the ground and says, I want to be there rather than just flat.
Yeah, Debbie?
Another area I think is real neighborhood oriented, which combines and integrates business, restaurants and neighborhoods is Brookside. I think Brookside, even the street layout with some of the brickwork and some of the shops you can go to, they're very unique in nature. But you can walk right over to Charlie Hooper's and get a beer or whatever you want and walk to your house. I mean, those are the kind of things, to me, that defines this community. And we kind of have to look at the culture, the the neighborhoods in this community and what does this community want to look like? You know, we're not New York City, I don't want to be New York City. And I want to kind of incorporate the culture and the, the things that people have established historically. And in, and then going into the future, what kind of activities do we want to put our hands around? And and not only for today, but for tomorrow and how families factor into this. Because I think families has always been a big consideration in our community activities, whether we plan events or whatever. And I, I'd like to see that family value things stay in Mission.
Yeah, Leah?
What I don't want to see is, is what we see with some of the current big fancy apartment buildings where there's, you know, apartments all the way around. And all the good stuff is on the inside with pools and all the, where that community can gather, but the rest of us cannot. So I really want this to beckon people from all over, but specifically Mission to gather and feel a part of it all.
And I would echo that and I would echo what Ben and Debbie said about sort of the neighborhood connectivity. You know, I think that is something that makes our site different from like Park Place or different from the Berkeley Development. And I know they're, they're trying to sort of create a neighborhood out of, you know, nothing, nothingness. But that was why I had flagged the seventy fifth and Wornell Project and I think it's a little, you know, too early to say on whether that's really a good match. But I was thinking about that, you know, here's a project sort of within a neighborhood type area. And so you're thinking about both attracting people from the outside, but what's something that the residents are going to want to be able to walk to and enjoy as well?
Well, and particularly in that, that area, you've got the connectivity with the trail, you know, that makes all of the trolley trail that makes all of those connections as well. And, you know, I think what we've seen and when we really think about. Being a city of two and a half square miles, I think I've often heard Councilmember Chozy talk about one of your goals is having us be, you know, fifteen minutes. You can get to anything that you want on foot within our community. And we do love our cars, we're very attached to getting in our cars and going places and. And we've seen that along the, you know, the downtown corridor as well, where it's hard, been hard even to encourage people to get out of their cars and walk as opposed to drive from one spot to another. But it's doable and I think we're seeing more of that, what the references to the Mission Market and the people that you kind of see coming out of the neighborhoods, whether that's to the market. To some of the breweries downtown, to some of the other things that we've seen. And so the more that we can do, and I, and I think again, Councilmember Chozy, that Shiny, I mean, Shiny Mission Parkway is a legitimate barrier. To that. But I think that's something we could be thoughtful about.
Debbie, did you have another note?
Yeah, I just, I have a question, don't have to answer this tonight, but between you and Brian, could you give us kind of an overview? Or a definition of how you define the mixed use relative to like a percentage has to be this? Or if there's a hundred percent and you take ninety percent in its restaurants and ten percent that it's something else. At what point are we using a mixed use term? Is it based on the breakdown of what the activity is? That part I really would like a clarification.
I don't know that we can clarify that, I mean, I think that. I think that we've, we've seen or there've, there's been feedback on other iterations of the, of the gateway project in the past that it was too heavily. You know, too much one thing or another. I, I think part of that really, and I don't know, maybe there is some textbook definition of what percentages, I don't, I think it more aligns with. Several things, what is the community, what is the governing body, what's the policy, what do you want to see, what do you want to encourage? What do you potentially want to incentivize, right? Because the costs and the financing for mixed uses can be very different than just a standalone multifamily. So I don't think there's one specific answer, I think it has to be kind of what, what do you think is that right balance? Again, if we talk about things that we want to draw people into mixed use development and give them reasons to stay, what could they stay for? And so I think that helps, you know, or if you have an office use, although, you know, coming out of the pandemic, our office. Many of our existing office buildings are less, you know, less than a full occupancy. Although we're starting to see some turnaround in that, but if you think about, you know, if you have an office component or if you have people working from home now. Post pandemic and larger numbers than, than before, what do those people, what can they walk out of their front door? And, you know, do during the day, what's available to them onsite? Can they go get a cup of coffee, can they have lunch, can they, you know, pick up a shopping item? I, yeah, I think.
Yeah, Joseph? Yeah.
I, I hear everybody's concern for wanting to keep our cities feeling with the future developments. But I also would like to caution us to not adhere too much to tradition of things. I think it's important for us to look forward into the things that the cities around us need and want as well. And so I, I'm a fan of up as opposed to out. And so those first two that we saw in there, I looked at them and I was like, that's just another mall, which I don't think we want at the moment. Those, the sustainability of those seem low. And so that's just my, that's my one thought is that there, like, I see a lot to liken here. When I see a lot of these like high activity, high density things, you do worry if it's like built in a, in a vacuum. I've been to so many of those where you go to a conference, you see the hotel and they're like, we built you a city around the hotel, have fun. That's what some of these look like as well. And I don't think we're going for that, I think that when I saw the original proposals that had like a seventeen story hotel, I was like, that's probably not for us right in that spot. But yeah, just, just being careful that we, that we embrace what we can about moving forward, I think is, is my thought on that.
Yeah, and I think tying it into, you know, a continuation of our progress that we want it to fit well with the single family neighborhoods that are right there. But then I think it was mentioned by several sort of that continuation down Martway, you know, with the increased multi, new multifamily that we have. You know, the, the plans that are starting to revamp the Mission Mart Shops and, you know, make that even, even better than it already is. And so, yeah, it's not just its own isolated thing off by itself, it's really connected into that vision for the city.
And we'll come back to that and some of the other pros and cons, but I think, you know, for many years, we. And we'll come back to that and some of the other pros and cons, but I think, you know, for many years, we thought Gateway is going to develop and it's going to push and encourage redevelopment to the West. And we're almost seeing the reverse of some of that. We're seeing some of that density start to creep from east or from west to east. And I think that's, you know, that's encouraging. It starts to change the vision and your ability to see what could be possible. If you think about just, you know, people walking out of the lanes currently phase one, and there's going to be a phase two. Um, and they, they have places to go now, right? We'd like to have, for them to have even more places to go as they walk to the east. Okay, next.
Yeah, just speaking on on sort of integrating well surrounding neighborhoods, since I live very, very close to the site. When I think of integrating well with my neighborhood, it's not necessarily that I'm worried about of height or density or something like that. What I'm worried about is that I'm not going to be able to, you know, let my kids walk over there because Roland Drive and Johnson Drive are still frightening to cross at any given time. So integrating well, I think, just to drive the point home is is partly our responsibility as a city to to make sure that the rest of us are that in the neighborhoods around the development can get there comfortably. And and yeah, I don't, I don't really mind height, especially when there's a natural boundary, like some streets and some topography that helps balance that. But I I do genuinely worry that the the more difficult it is to cross those streets and spend money there, the less the development will succeed. So.
That's a good point. Laura?
Uh, yeah, the next couple of slides we're going to look at, I just want to offer the caveat right up front that they are done, we are not Denver, we are not Atlanta, we are not Washington DC. So there's some very unique things that we will never have as it relates to some of these next developments. But these were some that had been suggested to us. In Denver, there were a couple of them, McGregor Square, which is adjacent to the ball, uh, the ballpark there. But again, you can see there, uh, and I happened to be there about a year ago, um, that big screen. So you don't have to be at the ballgame itself. You can be across the street, uh, enjoying some of that, but a mix of, um, uh, retail and then also Dairy Block in Denver. Again, just some examples there of that zero setback, interaction with the street, activating alleyways or larger pedestrian walkways with outdoor seating, outdoor dining, uh, some of the lights. So, um, before we flip to the next slide, any likes, dislikes, thoughts, reactions to any of those images?
Yeah, Leah?
Um, I I do like the idea of doing a big screen for sports, uh, because we were in Tampa and outside of their stadiums, many times there will be screens so that if you don't have a ticket to the game, you can still go to the stadium and be with a crowd and watch the game. And it really kind of brought the city close together. You know, we're very far away at this point from stadiums and I'm not proposing that we put a stadium there.
Others are suggesting.
But it would.
Tongue in cheek, I think.
You know, we have with, you know, the, um, you know, our sports teams are on fire these days and it's so much fun. I was never a Chiefs fan until like a year before last. You know what? I just, I couldn't help myself. And now I watch football more than I would like to admit. And it's really, it's so much fun to be in a community and share the love of of sports and and a team. I I think that that would be, you know, with a green space and a big screen and and beverages and food and and community and kids playing and, you know, that would be so much fun. And it would, it would bring people, I think, from surrounding areas to Mission so that they could be a part of something really fun. And then I, we haven't talked about this yet, but I think, um, you know, a a nice boutique hotel, I think, is almost essential because we just don't have enough of that. In this area, when my family comes to visit, you know, it's, it's, it's a drive to go see them or for them to come see us. And it would be really nice to, nothing massive, but, um, you know, a boutique hotel would be really, really beneficial. And that would bring people. I mean, I would like for, when people say, we're going to the Kansas City area, well, we could go to Brookside or we could go to the Plaza or we could go to Mission because they have this really nice hotel.
Yeah. And I think Meadowbrook's always fully booked up, that hotel. And so you're right on that front.
Yeah, Ben and then Brian?
Yes, the the hotel, I think in particular taps the transient guest tax, which is, I think, something that you're hard to find any other way to shoehorn that into a project. And it's a great way to, as we like to say, spend other people's money. So that and just a quick comment on some of these bigger developments, including the ones on the the following slides. Yeah, I don't, I don't think you'll ever see some of these things like, like what you're looking at in DC, for example. But what I want to notice about them is the, is the activation of the ground floor. The may, I'm, I think a major gripe I had with the, the, the most recent Gateway iteration was that, yes, we had some, some uh, zero setbacks, walls along the streets, but there basically no reason that you would ever want to walk up and down that sidewalk on Johnson Drive in that plan, which I think is is a, is a no go for me. So, um, yes, get the form right, get the, get the ground floors and the zero setbacks and all that stuff, but you gotta have a reason to want to walk up and down or it's just going to be crickets.
Brian?
Yeah, that kind of stole my comment a little bit. I think what I'm seeing with all of these that really, what they have in common is there's, there's a reason to want to be there that doesn't necessarily have anything to do with going to a specific shop. Like, there's just an element of joy of existing in the space that is completely lacking from like the Merriam Grand Station example, the Promontory, the Galleria. And I would say if we ever find ourselves in a place where our parking minimums are getting in the way of building that element of joy, then I would advocate for striking the parking minimum completely. Like, that shouldn't stop us that from from building something like this.
Yeah, I really liked, I couldn't think of the name of it. And so then Laura helped me, but the Denver, the Denver project, and you can see in the picture, the twinkle lights. You know, I don't know that anything that we've been building would have, you know, narrow corridors like that. I think some of that was preexisting, but sort of just that imbiting streetscape. You know, they have these, these lights strung across, they have the benches on the street, the nice landscape planters, you know, so it's a place that you want to be, um, as part of the pedestrian experience. And you're not just, just trying to go into that shop, you're also having fun just, you know, wandering the street and talking to people in that gathering spot.
Okay. Any other examples of places that you like or just like that we want to talk about before we kind of move on to maybe some of the specific pros and cons of our existing site?
Yes. Yeah, Debbie?
I always also say the building that is at the corner of John's, uh, Martway and Knoll that we visited and we took a tour of, they do older, they do cooking and everything on top of the roof. It's nice to integrate the rooftop of things, whether it be plantings, landscaping, um, you know, people can go out and sit down when it's nice outside to take a break. It's nice to use, we need to kind of use the things that we have control over or access to. And I think the the roofs are somewhat underestimated. I think they've done a great job with that. They do their barbecue grill stuff and everything out on top of the roof and it's, it's kind of neat looking.
A tall building with a rooftop bar, I think, would be very popular.
Bar is what we want, yeah.
Okay, next slide. The other thing I just kind of where I wanted, again, we're not here to, we don't have a new project to comment on. We're not talking about specific incentives. But I also want us to be realistic, uh, and and start to think about just what some of the pros and cons of that existing site as we anticipate or hope for, uh, other developments. And so obviously on a plus side, location, 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 we benefit from that entirely, uh, as a city access, although there's, there are some access challenges in terms of the volume, you know, as developers look at the volume of traffic and Shining Mission, direct access from Shining Mission Parkway is likely never going, you know, it would be a challenge. It is close to the transit, uh, center there on Martway. Uh, I think, um, we'd have the opportunity then the, um, eventually the Rock Creek Trail is intended to extend through that site. So you have, um, those connections as well, I think, just the visibility of the site. Although there was an interesting, uh, Business Journal article, uh, last winter that was talking about the Gateway site. And I don't recall the specific developer, but they were talking about there was, there would be a need for incentives. But that if it wasn't on the Mission side of Shining Mission Parkway, we'd have more ability to attract different retailers. And I just, that made me chuckle because the other side of Shining Mission Parkway, I know what they meant, but the other side of Shining Mission Parkway right there is Mission as well. So zip code matters, but I think, uh, we have a lot of things that, um, help support there. We've talked a lot tonight about walkable to neighborhoods, existing neighborhoods, walkable to the downtown corridor. So I think you could make connections there. I think we've talked a little bit about the investment immediately to the West that we've seen. And really just kind of the place where we find ourselves now, and that's an opportunity to really reimagine what we want, uh, and what we would like to see at that site. Then we think about what are some of the negatives? I think the history. The, as we know, there are a lot of legacy costs associated with that. So any developer who might come along is inheriting, uh, some of that. And that, um, could relate to, uh, the, the sales price for the land. It could relate to the costs necessary to potentially remove all of the existing structures that are there, prep the site for any new development. There's been a lot of, uh, public, um, scrutiny over the years, uh, not, uh, under, not undeserved, but, um, I think there's a potential for people to be somewhat skeptical of what might come next. There's a litigation that we touched on that we don't have any control over. And really no way to assess how quickly, uh, things might move out of that and we might see uh, some opportunities, changes in the economy. I mean, I think when we look back at the history of the site and as I was reviewing it, um, and I have had the distinct pleasure of being here the entire 20 years of this project's lifespan. But I think there were, you know, there are some things that were within the developer's control that they potentially didn't handle to bring the project to fruition. But I think there are kind of three events in my mind that were outside of some of any of our control. The first being the revision of the floodplain maps and thinking about how to react or respond or plan for future development of a site of that size. Really our largest, uh, developable parcel within the community. I think the crash of oh eight, um, was something that, uh, I think that plan would have gone at that time, but for that. And then I think we have the pandemic in a variety of different ways. But I look at that as kind of going back to that opportunity to say, what did we learn from each of those experiences? And while we may not be able to control them, how do we either continue to advance development or protect ourselves against, um, downturns or consequences that might result from that? I think, again, raising sufficient capital to develop the kind of project that I hear you all envisioning and talking about is a challenge, I think, but upcoming changes in the economy, um, could certainly influence that. I think the location of the stormwater structures underneath the site, there was a, um, layout of the stormwater structures in your, uh, history document. Originally, there were a lot of things built on top of that. Those structures are now nearing 20 years of age. And so I think redesigning, planning for those, uh, replacement, repair and maintenance could present some challenges. And so I think there are, you know, it's always a balancing act and we'll have to think about, but I think it's good to keep those challenges and to be realistic as we think about it, uh, going forward. That is really all we had prepared for you this evening, but we're happy to continue any discussion, answer any other questions that you have or think about, uh, either tonight or into the future, if there are are other things that you would like to discuss or hear from, um, you know, local developers, others who might give you some feedback. We can certainly, again, this is what I think is the first of several conversations we should have.
Yeah, Debbie?
No, today we heard at the State of the Cities address, by the way, our mayor did an excellent job on giving an overview of how great this city is. One of the things that was mentioned in Merriam that they are going through a process of doing underground utility lines. So as we're looking out the future, we kind of need to look at those big scale things that we, pros, cons, et cetera, on what it would be like to bury the utility lines. I mean, storms would be different. A lot of things would be different with those things buried. But what kind of a planning process for some of that, that once things are in, the more that are in, it's going to take that much more to get the other things addressed. So I'd like us to look at that on a, on a broader scale, if you will. Visionary wise, how do we want to look and how would that work? Just one element is buried utility lines. We also had a, a plan several years ago, I don't know if you were here, Laura, I was here, when we had a group come in and define what it would be like to do planning down Johnson Drive. You were, were you part of that?
Well, hi, with the Hyatt Palmer study. I think that was before me, but I am familiar with the Hyatt Palmer study.
Sometimes the planning tools, I think, would be really helpful, like what would we collectively, excuse me, like to see down Johnson Drive? I mean, is it seven Mexican restaurants, a beauty shop, card, you know, those things? And it's a balancing act between what you'd like and by virtue of the law, what we can say no to and what we can accept. So I think those kind of things, the next time, you know, we do planning sessions, I'd love to sit down and look again at what that Hyatt, Hyatt Palmer study showed and what that incorporated into our planning processes, especially down Johnson Drive and what people would like to see there in the future.
Other comments?
Yeah, Ben?
Yeah, I just think the only thing I haven't brought up that I'd like to punctuate my thoughts with is, um, I'd really like to see, uh, that, that when verticality of mixed use, not necessarily in the way that that Brian was saying, but, you know, not an office over there and apartment over here and, and, you know, things you maybe have to walk 300 yards between or whatever, but put some apartments over some retail, but, you know, mix things up so that there are people flowing around the entire site and and really, um, making the whole thing feel, feel lively at at all times of day. That's what I'd like to see.
I did have perhaps a, a closing comment too, and I think just sort of collecting what everyone said, that I think, you know, we view this as a generational taught type opportunity and project, you know, for the city. It's our largest, um, undeveloped site. And so, you know, I think, um, you know, we've had some conversations with developers. Again, the city does not own the site. We don't control the site. It's tied up in litigation. But we've had some conversations with developers who might be interested in trying to pursue the site if it were to change ownership. And, um, you know, we hear, hear a lot about what can't be done. And I think, you know, we want to hear what, what can be done with the site. And so, you know, I really think that this video should be, um, required viewing for anyone who wants to come meet with us and talk about the Gateway site. And just that, you know, I think, I think I could speak for the group in saying that we're not going to be so frustrated with the condition of, you know, the site and Gateway's history so as to accept a bad project. You know, we're looking for a winning project for the site.
One thing I told you we were going to talk about very briefly and I forgot was kind of code enforcement. I mean, one of the things we hear a lot about is the condition of the site and rightfully so. Um, we have, uh, before the end of the year, we had issued a notice of violation on that property for several of the significant, um, the parking structure, the graffiti, the condition of, but the several major things. And so we are proceeding and working our way through that. We, they did not resolve those issues or or request a hearing before the governing body within the timeframe required in the NOSA violation. So we will be kind of proceeding with next steps and you'll hear more about that, uh, to come. I think the other thing that I did want to just touch on, and we included the FAQs. We've updated the FAQs and I think we'll, um, put some of this information, we were talking about sort of making it more prominently or easily accessible on the website so people can see it. But one of the things that we get a question about is, um, you know, why don't we use eminent domain to acquire the site? And, um, eminent domain does not allow us to take a property, uh, for nothing. Um, so there's a process for valuing that. And if we were to acquire any piece of property using eminent domain, we would have to use it for a public purpose. And so we would not be able to then acquire the site, assuming we had the money to do that, and turn around and then offer it to a private developer. And so, um, while I think that's sometimes an easy fall, fallback for uh, position for, for people to ask or a question for people to ask, there are certainly challenges that don't align with, I think, what, um, helps the overall health and vitality and long-term, uh, value of our community. So thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, Brian, for powering through your baritone voice, um, with us. And, um, that's all we've got for you tonight.
All right. Thank you, Laura. That concludes our work session.